Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Fable City Council meeting, May 9th, meeting to order. At this time, we always start with an invocation. We'd ask that Pastor McLaughlin, if he would, to come to the podium, if you wouldn't mind, and give us the invocation. Ask that all will please stand for the prayer immediately following, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, Pastor. Let us bow. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come and govern our city according to your word. We ask that you bless all the participants, all those persons who are making decisions, and those decisions will benefit the community. This we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McLaughlin, and I know you'll be coming up later, so we'll give you an opportunity to kind of tell the audience about your church, your ministry, and so forth. All right, at this time, councils, we move to announcements and recognitions. For announcements, have Ms. Sharon Moyer, if she will come, and Community Engagement Administrator for Partnership for Children, right? How are you?
I'm fantastic. How are you? Well, thank you so much for having me be here tonight, and I appreciate the time. As the mayor said, I'm with the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County, and today I'm here to give you an update on our newest program, Family Connects. As you may know, the Partnership for Children is a public, private, nonprofit, founded in 1993 out of then-Governor Jim Hunt's Smart Start Initiative. This initiative's core vision is to ensure that every child, every child, has the support that they need to enter kindergarten healthy and ready to succeed. In 1993, Cumberland was selected to be one of the pilot programs, and to this day, we continue to be a pioneer in early education and family support. Now, I know that each one of you shares our vision. Our vision is that we are all able to live in a community that is economically prosperous, where families are successful and children thrive. To play our part in that vision, we focus on support for families with children birth to five years old. Our board's set priorities are to provide services and support that advances the well-being of children, strengthens the early care and education system in our community, and empowers families. So last April, I stood here and told you that our organization was selected to pilot a universal home visiting program for families with newborns in Cumberland, Hope, and Robinson Counties. This program is funded by federal dollars through the preschool development grant, Birth Through Five. This pilot program is in partnership with the North Carolina Partnership for Children and Family Connects International. The Family Connects model has shown to increase positive parenting behaviors like hugging, comforting, and reading to infants. It has improved home safety. It has reduced emergency room visits and hospital overnight stays by 50% in the first year of life. It has reduced postpartum depression and anxiety in mothers, and it has decreased the investigation for suspected child abuse and neglect by 44%. So I'm happy to say that six short months after I came here to tell you about this life and community-changing initiative, we implemented the Family Connects program. While the federal funding has allowed us to implement Family Connects here in our area, we couldn't have done it without a five-year investment from the Cumberland Community Foundation Elizabeth A. Huddspeth Endowment Fund that has set us up for success. We are also grateful to our friends who have supported us at Cape Fear Valley Health and our nurse partner, 4C. So here's the meat of what I'm getting ready to tell you. On October 4th, 2021, we implemented Family Connects. On October 25th, specially-trained nurses from our nursing partner, 4C, conducted the first virtual in-home visit. During the visit, the nurses are able to assess the newborn, address postpartum health concerns, respond to immediate need for support and guidance such as breastfeeding and home safety. They're also able to link families to more than 200 community services, and they also help parents learn how to better connect with their infants. This program provides between one and three free home visits at about the third week of age, regardless of income or demographic risk. So here are some numbers. Since October 4th, 2021, we have had 2,117 children born at Cape Fear Valley. I'm going to repeat that. 2,117 children since October 4th. Of those, 1,809, or 86%, qualified for a visit, meaning that they reside in Cumberland, Hope, or Robinson Counties. Of the 1,809 who live in the Ketchmon area, less than 200 have declined a visit. That's 11%, meaning that 89% have said yes to a visit. As of this morning, we had completed 636 visits and have had made over 900 referrals to community agencies. The number-one community resource is household safety. That includes things like making sure that they have covers on their outlets. It's also about food and nutrition, if they need a referral to WIC, or if they need to know how to find a breast pump. We have nearly 500 more visits scheduled, and the rest of the families are waiting in the queue for scheduling. You have a bedside card here with you that the nurses in Labor and Delivery hand out, but I'm very excited to tell you that by the end of the month, our staff will actually be on the floor in Labor and Delivery and offering in-person in-home visits. Yay. So we know that this program is positively impacting our community in many ways. It's changing the lives of our community and our families so that hopefully we can one day see our vision of living in an economically prosperous community where families are successful and children thrive. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Moyer?
Mayor, just wanted to make a comment.
Counselmember Wright?
Just want to thank you, Partnership for Children and Homeless Connect for the great job you guys are doing. You know, we've been working with you many, many years here, also with the P for P Coalition, and have really made an impact, and so we're very excited for this new program, the home visits, that really, really makes a difference in the lives of children. Can you really go into a little bit more about how that impacts the family and the children, this program, just a little bit?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So this program was born out of Durham. Dr. Kenneth Dodge was given the task, from Duke University, given the task to help reduce child abuse and maltreatment claims. Home visiting models of all different kinds work. In fact, Mike Nagowski, when we went to the hospital to talk to him about this, he said, "We know that home visiting works," because they have a program at Cape Fear for stroke victims, and it has reduced how many stroke victims return to the emergency room. So home visiting in many areas work, but there's been a lot of randomized controlled trials that Duke University has done, and so that's where those statistics come. The main thing that we focused on was the reduced child abuse and neglect. We're part of a consortium of about 26 agencies that created our community's first child abuse and prevention plan. It's the state's first, excuse me, community child abuse prevention plan. And so when we looked at that, we thought, well, what can we do? Our focus is birth to five. What can we do to help reduce that? And because we know that home visiting works, we went with the Family Connect model because of the statistics that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Wright. Thank you, Ms. Moyer. Counsel, any other questions? Well, keep up the good work, and thank you for the contribution to the community. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Counsel, at this time, just for the recognitions, Counselmember Wright, you had an announcement?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the chief and also the police department dealing with homelessness, that department. I saw firsthand last week where a homeless young man came out to the site where we were campaigning, and he came up to me, and I asked him if he didn't need anything, and he said, "I just want to go home." And when he said, "I just want to go home," his eyes filled with tears, and my heart went out to him. So we immediately went into action, calling the, you know, the police department. The police department got with the team of homeless, I don't know their names, but they did a splendid job, got him connected with the Salvation Army so he can sleep overnight, thereby giving him a ticket with inasmuch, fed him breakfast, put him on the bus, and he's at home in Wilmington today with his family. So that was very rewarding, and for him to see that happen, he couldn't believe it. But I just, my hats are off to the team and the community for getting involved and putting programs, you, Chief Hawkins, and your people. And I just wanted to thank you all openly with the community to say, "It's working." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselmember Wright. Thank you, Chief, and Fable PD for that. Counselors, we move to recognitions. At this time, we'll recognize the National Tennis Month. We ask Ms. Rosemary McLean and Mr. Robert Johnson, if you could meet me at the podium, please.
Whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads to promotion and growth of the sport on every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 700,000 members from every corner of the country. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone, regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability, through its USTA grants. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows then, shows more than 21.6 million Americans played tennis in 2020, an unprecedented 22% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since PAC study began in 2007. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Fayetteville of all ages and ability, the sport has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of May 2022 as National Tennis Month in Fayetteville, and I encourage all residents to learn more about the sport and the local programs available. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand in the cause of the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this second day of May 2022. Mitch Colvin, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Rosemary McLean, and I'm president of the Cape Fear Regional Tennis Foundation, and I just wanted to say that we were all very happy to vote for the bond, and we are very excited for the new tennis facility to be built. One of the largest projects that we hope to achieve and work on is to collaborate with the city and bring some of the largest state tournaments to Fayetteville, and this would just be huge, and it'd involve the whole entire community, and it'd be a great benefit to everyone, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you, guys. At this time, I'll ask that Ms. Amanda Christensen would come to the podium for Friendship Community Gardens proclamation, which will be read by Counselmember Ingram.
Whereas Friendship Community Gardens dedicates its main garden site on Turnpike Road on Sunday, May 15th, 2022. Whereas the mission of Friendship Community Gardens is to community garden at the intersection of three diverse neighborhoods in order to plant, grow, and harvest healthy food options for local residents while creating space for racial and disability reconciliation within our community. And whereas community gardening can be used to help build new relationships across existing racial and ability barriers. And whereas community gardening can help families with limited resources to supplement their tables with locally grown produce. And whereas community gardening can help teach children where fresh food comes from and help encourage healthy food choices. And whereas community gardening can offer opportunities for young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to learn and practice new skills while engaging with neighbors. And whereas community gardening can encourage a better understanding of our fellow community members through the development of unlikely friendships, it will be these unlikely friendships that help us get past division and mistrust. And whereas community gardening can play a key role in a stronger neighborhood and a stronger city. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby proclaim the 15th day of May in the year of 2022 in honor of Friendship Community Gardens, and call upon the residents of Fayetteville to be inspired to start learning how to garden and grow fresh fruits and vegetables to make sure our children learn about food, the food cycle, and good food choices, and to utilize community gardening as well as other community-based activities to create unlikely friendships with neighbors across racial and disability barriers. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this ninth day of May 2022.
Hello, and good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight, and I'm really proud to represent, I say, a small group of volunteers, but over the last four or five years since we've started, we really have had, we've been humbled and honored to have so much support from the community volunteers, as well as local businesses that have really come together and helped us create this little, small gym in the Savoy Heights and Arsenal Heights neighborhood. We think that Fayetteville is a pretty amazing city. We think that Fayetteville is full of really special people, and we think where we're located on the, in the map of Fayetteville is a special place because there are such, there's such diversity that surrounds our garden, you know, Haymount, the Savoy Heights neighborhood. You have some large churches in the area, a lot of community support in the area. You have Friendship House Fayetteville in the area. So we just tried to come up years ago with an activity, something that we could do in that area that can draw, could draw attention from a lot of different groups, and we all have to eat, and nobody knows how to grow food anymore, so we thought that that would be a really amazing way to create an activity that everybody has an opportunity to take part in, teaching children, but also an activity where elderly neighbors can come out and socialize. It's really not that expensive to do if you have a place to do it, and not everybody has the resource to be able to garden in their own backyard. So if you don't follow us on Facebook or Instagram, you should, Friendship Community Gardens, and we are having a dedication this Sunday to dedicate our main garden area. Over several different patches of space, we have upwards of 60 raised bed, garden beds for rent, very, very affordable rent, and we have people that are super happy to help supplement neighbors if they can't afford the yearly rent, but we're having a good time. COVID kind of slowed us down for the last couple of years, but we're really getting geared up. So if you haven't been out in the area, come check us out, follow us on Facebook and Instagram, like I said, and come, come help us dedicate on Sunday our main garden space at 4:00. And thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would also like to add, and I want to thank you, Ms. Christensen, for the work that you are doing with, with, with the volunteers and the garden. The community that has raised beds, they're all very diverse, and what I appreciate the most is, having grown up in the Haymount Hills, Savoy Heights area, and my grandmother's house is there, is that we all look out for each other's beds, and we all make sure that we don't go without, and I think that's, that's that unlikely friendship, and I think that is a part of whatever that racial divide is. We are coming together over that one common thing that we need, we all need, which is food, and we know Fayetteville loves food. And to be able to grow, Savoy Heights has a lot of retired individuals, and to be able to see them get outside and, and do something that they love and they haven't probably done since they were, like, kids, we thank you for bringing that to our community, and thank you for engaging them and keeping them at the forefront of all issues and concerns.
Thank you.
I just think that there's a lot of racial mistrust. There's also a lot of, there's a wide gap between young adults with disabilities and, and people that don't have disabilities, and we're just never going to leap that, that gap of mistrust if we don't even know each other's first name. So I think the more activities that are made available that people can be involved in, neutral activities that we can learn each other's story and learn each other's name, you know, just the better. So I appreciate this.
Thank you. At this time, we ask that Pastor McLaughlin and the New Life Christian Academy and Prep School would meet me at the podium. Proclamation will be read by Counselmember Banks McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I do want to recognize the basketball team, New Life Christian Academy Prep for the 22, 22. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'll come down there. Okay, I want to recognize the basketball team. They're from New Life Christian Academy and Prep. This is the 2022 division. This is your fourth national championship. Is that correct? Okay, and from, you guys won in Daytona, Tennessee. Daytona, Tennessee. Okay, and we have, what, Coach Parker, is that you? Okay, this is the Coach Parker, the principal, Mr. McLaughlin, and this is the 25th year for the school from, the school is from K through 12, 12th graders. So I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge each person. We have Caleb James. He's not here. Okay. Malachi Travis. Jaheen Fajron, not here. Okay. Amari Logan. I'm gonna get them, but. Darian Gunn. Okay. Okay, they had tests. We give them a pass. Javion Grant. Okay, and I'll read it shortly. And Tyree Mason. Noah Summer. Tell them they had the opportunity to meet the mayor, some council members, and get awarded, but that's okay. Elijah Arzuega, did I pronounce it right? Okay. And last but not least, Demetrius Polk, and I do want to read this, says, "The Certificate of Excellent, the 22, the 2022 Division Fourth National Champions of the NACA in recognition of your hard work achievement during the 2021 and 22, 2022 basketball season." Congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations. And Coach, just played a major role. You guys want to get a picture? Mayor, take a picture of you guys.
On behalf of Coach Parker and the New Life Christian Academy family, I want to thank the City Council, especially City Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin for her support and for the mayor. And our goal has been, still is, 25 years, not to lose one child to the world. Gary, you want to just say something?
Yes, on behalf of the players, I would also just like to say thank you for the recognition, as it for sure means a lot to all of us, not only for, you know, our team this year, but previous teams and teams coming up. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for representing the city so well on a national stage. We really appreciate that. Counselors, we move to item 5.0, City Manager's Report. Dr. Whitfield, anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Mayor. In the city manager's absence, staff did have a little bit of information that we wanted to provide regarding the storm debris collection from over the past weekend. City crews from multiple departments have worked to identify and collect storm-related debris, and will be collecting, continuing collecting at locations as identified. Currently, there are no reports of impassable or dangerous storm-related debris remaining in roadways or in our public infrastructure. Several areas were cut, cleared, and collected on Friday night and into Saturday morning. Solid waste continues to, this week, to survey and identify any continued problem areas. Once the debris is picked up, our Streets Division will be sweeping and cleaning the roadways. In areas where the impact was the greatest, debris is being collected with a dedicated triage crew this week. If staff sees debris in survey areas, it will be collected this week, and there will be no fee associated. Solid waste will continue with bulky pickup this week, and will collect the majority of storm-related debris during the next week's regular scheduled limb collection to provide residents an opportunity to clear their yards. Residents should follow the established guidelines for placing storm debris and yard waste debris and yard waste at the curb for collection. Any areas of concern can be reported through our Fayette Fix It app or by calling 910-433-1FA. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Whitfield. Uh, any questions? Mayor Protim, just?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Dr. Whitfield, um, so you said that there will be trucks coming. Did, is that contractors that will be, or is it city staff? So people will see different trucks in their neighborhood?
City staff.
It'll be city staff. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councillors, we move to, uh, item 6.0, is approval of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve?
Will be it?
Motion by Councilmember Wright to approve. Is there a second? Second about Councilmember Hare. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, discussion, Councilmember Dawkins?
Mayor, is this, uh, place where I need to pull an item?
Uh, if it's under consent, it'll be the next.
Okay, we're gonna go into consent now. Okay, sorry.
All right. Uh, council, no further questions. Those in favor of approval of the agenda, show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And council, we'll, we'll attempt to utilize our, uh, iPads, so, uh, make sure everyone has joined, uh, and work through the, uh, system if we can. Um, item 7.0 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Dawkins, you had a?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda, and I'd like to pull, well, I'm wondering, uh, Madam City Attorney, I, would I need to, uh, pull 7.013 and then make a motion that we table it, or can I incorporate it into one motion?
Probably to just, uh, pull it and.
And then, and then at the, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, pulling 7.013, please.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Dawkins, uh, second it.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, hold on a second. Was there a second?
Well, I, there's an additional item to pull.
Okay. Councilmember Ingram?
I would, if possible, did you say 7, 03?
7.013.
13. Okay, then never mind.
All right. Is there a second?
That's a second.
Okay. Second by, uh, Councilmember Ingram, discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor with the modifications as mentioned? Uh, show of hands. Okay. Oh, it's, okay. All right.
Working.
All right. All right. Uh, all right. Votes will be displayed here shortly. All right. Motion carries nine. Uh, unanimous by those voting. Uh, Councilmember Dawkins?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss that item at a possible work session in the future and am open to a suggestion as to what month that we would do that. Um, June maybe, is June too quick? And then we're probably not going to have a work session in July.
Uh, haven't seen the, uh, the depth of the June work session, but we could certainly table it with anticipation of June, uh, to invite the Dogwood Festival folks.
We can absolutely do that.
All right. Uh, motion to table this item to our June work session, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, it didn't show. All right. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to, to our iPads for voting. All right, Madam Clerk, that passes nine to zero. Uh, those, unanimous by those voting. Item 8.0, it's the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice on what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be discussed under public hearing, ask that you please reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the clerk, ask that you please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when you see, uh, the light located on the podium, change from green to yellow, and we've changed that somewhat, uh, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. Uh, when you see red, that means that your time has expired again. The city council policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. That being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. We have 11, uh, speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Katrina Marsden.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Marsden? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Dawn Atkins Hurley.
Oh, Ms. Marsden is here?
She's here.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Marsden. It, I didn't hear you, Jim. That's, ma'am, are you Ms. Katrina Marsden?
My name is Zetti Duke.
Okay.
And I'm 76 years old and I grew up in Fayetteville.
Ms. Duke, I'm, I'm sorry, um, we, we have a, a policy decision you have to sign up prior to the start of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's on here?
That's okay.
Okay, I haven't gotten to you yet. So when the clerk calls your name.
I was told you got to me, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. I'll be calling you shortly, okay? All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Dawn Atkins Hurley, please. Excuse me.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
I'm a ma'am.
Ma'am?
We had some competing, some other stuff going on. That's okay. Um, good evening. I'm Dawn Atkins Hurley. Um, I'd like to thank you for having me, uh, Mayor Colvin, the council members, and everyone else listening and watching. Um, I'm the chairwoman of the Support the Market House Board, and it's good to be finally here in person. I recently attended the Dogwood Festival downtown and it was such an encouragement to see all these folks enjoying themselves. Um, the fence around the market house was down and there were people taking pictures and just enjoying being under the market house again. There was also a group exercising their freedom of protest. Uh, I found it a bit ironic that this site, which seems to make so many people angry, was where the U.S. Constitution was ratified. That document gave them the right to that freedom of speech, that right to freely express, express their discontent. This market house, this building, this site of conscience represents so much more than the negative images that have been linked to it. My original speech to the council lists many of the important functions of this, this market house. I also find it ironic that I finally agree with Mayor Colvin. He said, "It is time to move on. It is time to turn the page." Thank you so much for that. Now I would like to present our Repurpose the Market House survey with some explanations concerning these documents, and I believe y'all have copies. The first document is a timeline of our Support the Market House Board. Uh, the two important dates are when we, uh, presented the council with the petition and we, at that point, we started, uh, the survey for repurposing the market house. The, uh, other important date is today. We're speaking and we're sending you the repurpose survey. The next document is our mission statement. What's important about this document is our original intent for this board. Our Market House 360 project was all-inclusive and addressed not only the market house, but all surrounding areas towards the positive development of downtown. Our repurpose survey comes next. The survey consists of five categories with options to choose from each category. The options were all suggestions from people we spoke to while conducting the petition. We also presented a space to make personal suggestions not already listed. Our soliciting parameters were to ask everybody who passed by us. We did not, uh, we did not make any exceptions, anybody. Um, we also encouraged them to have a voice in this important, important decision. We tallied all the responses and recorded all the independent suggestions. What you will see is that the responses emphasized art, education, community involvement, and inclusive direction in their, allowing all cultures to participate.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Dawn, I think your time has expired. We certainly appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Hurley?
Okay. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
No questions?
Well, we, we can't ask pub, uh, questions at the public comment. This is for the public to speak to us. But thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Betty Duke.
All right, Ms. Duke, we ready for you.
Sorry about the goof. I can blame it on that woman back there. My name is Zetti Duke and I grew up in Fayetteville and I'm 76 years old. So I've been here a hell of a long time. My husband was military and I didn't get to go a damn place. So y'all are stuck with me. I grew up with the market house. You hear a lot of stories about the market house. 99% of them are incorrect. I, when my daughters were older, I founded a troop at Lewis Chapel Church for senior girl scouts. And we were supposed to be serving the dignitaries at the market house during a parade. Got a lot of negative thoughts and I taught them, okay, go downtown to the library, do research. They found out a lot of things they didn't know and they were shocked. So they had a blast serving dignitaries at the white, at the market house. But what most people don't know, yes, slaves were sold at the market house, but they didn't bring them in on the Cape Fear River and load them off a boat. They were sold in Wilmington and other ports by the ocean. People bought them, brought them into this area. There wasn't a lot of plantations in the Fayetteville area. So you know there wasn't a lot of slaves in the area. But when somebody died, their belongings were sold. That's the house and everything that's in it. So therefore slaves were sold at the market house. But like I say, they weren't brought in a ship up the Cape Fear River. They were sold in Wilmington and then brought here. And my girls were shocked to learn that when they heard other things in school. But after they did the research, they had the right story. The market house, when you have people, things sold, you had possessions, furniture, property, anything that the Landover owned. So therefore, the market house has a little bit of a difference than what you normally hear. And I would like for somebody to do the research and at least put it in a book or something in the market house so that people that will come to the market house would know the honest to goodness truth. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Silona Aikens.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I would like to say to the city council, to Mitch Colvin, to everyone in the building, to everyone in Washington, DC, to everyone in the United States of America, to which we come, which will be free. I'm free indeed. I can stand tall. I can stand strong. I can truly say that God is real in my life and he has kept me through all harm and danger. He has kept me. And I want to thank everybody for being there for me, for praying for me, for fighting for me. Thank you so much. I can never repay you for all the hard labor and all that you have invested in me and believed in me. God bless you all. God bless you all. God bless you all. Now I'm here to say, I need recompense. I need compensation for the humiliation, the embarrassment of my name and my shame. I need God to fix it. And you know what it's about? I need God to fix things. I can't fix it. All I can do is pray and believe God that he's gonna fix things in this city. A lot of us have believed a lie for a long time, but it's now for the truth. You see the truth. The Bible say the truth shall set you free. And whom that the Son set free is free indeed. I need restitution for everything I've been through in this city. I can't fight against you. The Bible said we don't wrestle against friends in blood, but it's a principality, a power, a spirit. We need to unite in Fayetteville and all over the world. We need to unite. United we stand and divided we fall. That's all I have to say. God bless you.
God bless you. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Maya Warren.
May I, Ms. Warren?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Fayetteville City Council. I'm gonna try to tackle two issues tonight with the three minutes that I do have. I'll start by saying you all had assigned the Human Relations Commission with the task of having some type of community input and they failed, and I hope that you all hold them accountable. Putting stickers on a wall does not get community input on what should happen with the market house. Someone like myself who sat in the meetings with the DOJ and heard the conversation, now is your time to actually hear from the community. And again, putting stickers on a wall is not what it takes to hear from your community and for them to tell you what it is they want to do with the market house. Slaves were sold there. Me personally, I want it gone, but unfortunately you all took it upon yourself to say no without community input, so we have to deal with it. But if we have to deal with it, we deserve a full-blown conversation about what it is that we want done with the market house. So on to my second topic. Mr. Jason Walker, you all can hold the police chief accountable for not holding accountable the officers that responded to that scene. First and foremost, Jeffrey Hash was not de-armed. That's the first thing that they did wrong. There were several other things that were done wrong at the scene of the crime in which I have emailed and reached out to the police chief and heard nothing. What are we gonna do to the officers that failed to do their job when they reported to that scene? It was stated that Jeffrey Hash was treated like a normal citizen, but truth be told, if the roles were reversed, we all know that Jason Walker would be arrested right now. Jason Walker would have been treated differently when the police arrived to the scene. Now it is in your hands. I know that you cannot hire or fire the police chief, but you can get on the city manager to do so if you all felt it was appropriate. So I'm asking that you put pressure on the police chief that says she wants to serve us to do what is needed to make sure that those officers are held accountable. Unfortunately, Jeffrey Hash won't face charges, but something can be done to the officers that failed to do their job when they reported to that scene. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Malloy.
Good evening, Ms. Malloy.
I apologize for my casualness. I've been out canvassing, so I'm in t-shirts and sandals. Um, I wanted to address the, uh, there's been conversation at different venues with the Board of Elections, um, with the, uh, City of Hope Meals, also in Spring Lake, and addressing inclusion for, um, the prayers that are done, um, during the city council meetings. And so I took it upon myself to do, um, a quick research about the First Amendment, um, first, and I'm just gonna read some quotes and then go down on, um, what inclusion would look like, uh, if we were to, um, have that in our city council meetings. So first, separation of church and state. Um, Roger Williams, the founder of Rhode Island, was the first public official to use this metaphor. Um, it was used to make sure that the Christian church would be, um, that there would be a possibility of having a wall or hedge of separation between the wilderness of the world and the garden of the church. And Mr. Williams believed that in doing so, that would keep the government, And Mr. Williams believed that in doing so, that would keep the government, the government's involvement, out of the church so that it would not corrupt the church. So that's dealing with separation of church and state. The endorsement test, which Justice Sandra Day O'Connor proposed this test, which would ask whether any government actions would amount to the endorsement of a religion. In Lynch versus Donnelly, O'Connor had stated that her fundamental concern was whether government action conveyed a message to non-adherents that they were outsiders. The next also is the neutrality test, which was given. And this is, it questions involving appropriate use for the government and making sure that the government treat religious groups the same as it would any other similarity group. So then I started looking at the different types of religions, and I know this is not, it is not all-inclusive. Judaism, Christianity, Islam, Buddhism, Catholicism, Hinduism, Protestantism, Baptist, there's a whole list. Also, then I looked at, you know, the different types of prayers. So the top prayers that were mentioned was, of course, Christianity, Judaism, Islam, Buddhism, Hinduism, and Wiccan. And of course, we know there's more. Then I looked at the top religions in the world, seeing that Christianity, 31%, Islam, 24%, non-religion, Hinduism, and so forth going down. Then within our country, Christianity, of course, being 74%, unaffiliated, 19%, other, 6.2%. Now, with inclusion, we're not saying that, we're not saying that it's about a majority, but we want to make sure we have 12 months, we should be able to hear 12 different prayers in our council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Nero Coleman.
Mr. Coleman.
My name is Nero B. Coleman, crazy horse to my friends. I live at 352-5 Bubble Creek Court here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. My purpose for coming this evening was to talk about the trail mix a little bit. I know I'm speaking just before the Park and Recreation Report, but this is just a reminder about the Mazarick Park Equal Access Campaign that we did in our community. And I just wanted to kind of like remind the city council that, you know, the trail mix that the city's having, and I hope this is going to be in the report, has our plan mixed in, but we come out of different fundings. So I'm just here to make sure that our plan is still included in the park recreation thing. And we also want to talk about the gardens that we have in Glenville Garden. We also have a garden like the garden that they're having in Savora Heights also that will be attached to this trail. So I just wanted to let you know that this is going to be a benefit, historical health and economic benefit also. And I just wanted to thank you guys for seeing that we, and I just want to be a reminder that we're still looking for you all to help us out with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Mario Benevente.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Mario Benevente, 3549 Hastings Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here again to beseech each and every one of you to make it a priority that this city council institute a citizen review board as an independent oversight of the Fayetteville Police Department. We've spoken a number of times, I have anyways, to the city council, asking, pleading that you guys take action on this particular role. There are a number of great initiatives that have begun in this city. I attended two meetings where Mr. Kevin Brooks has started the PROVE Project, a way that we can start a complementary strategy to law enforcement based off of a New Jersey model. I think that's a great option for this city. I think that's the direction we should be going. But at the same time that we are going into the communities to help them heal, we also need to give them the assurance and the ability to trust in our law enforcement. And that cannot happen unless we know that police misconduct will be adequately addressed if and when it occurs. We know that that's exactly what happened in January 8th of this year. Jason Walker was killed by an off-duty sheriff. And when the police arrived, they failed to disarm that particular shooter. They failed to arrest that particular shooter. And because of that, we've heard from the State Attorney's Office, Attorney Spejos, who had to give the sad, disappointing, regretful news that she will not be pressing charges because of the botched investigation by the Fayetteville Police Department in those initial 48 hours before the case was handed to them. We need this particular review board in this city. At one of these PROVE meetings, I was disappointed to hear from a city council member who attended, who made the claim that it was not legal for the city council to put such an item on the agenda. I will be sending each and every one of you a copy of the work that the city council did in 2013 when they passed a very specific resolution on June 10th of 2013, Resolution Number R2013-027, a resolution to the city council of the city of Fayetteville to support and advocate for passage of special legislation to allow the city to confidentially disclose limited personal information to members of a citizen review board. Beyond that, the city staff has already done the homework. They have already presented to you, and it's all something that you all have access to, the breakdown of exactly how a review board would be done. A lot of work has already been done on this particular issue. It's a mistake for anyone in the city council to claim that it's not legal for anyone here to put that on the agenda to pass, because a lot of the work has already been done. It's a necessary requirement as we continue to improve public safety in this community that we not simply stop at addressing community healing. We need to go beyond and make sure we're addressing police misconduct as well. That's something that everyone on this particular board ought to be passionate about. I feel like we're still missing folks. We have plenty of business folks. We've got plenty of church folks on this council. I need one of you all to step up and be passionate about justice just as much as I am. I'm asking you again to please start today on putting this on the agenda. We need a citizen's review board here in Fayetteville.
Thank you, Mr. Benevente. And just for the listening audience, the city councils at times past even referenced in the last comments, four resolutions were sent to the state legislature, which will have to give municipalities the authority to do review boards. So all of that's public information can be found on the city's website, but thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Once again, my name is Chilenko Hurst, 1384 Wayside Drive. I'm disappointed, and I'm upset. I've had numerous conversations with the Walker family. And I look at the makeup of this city council, of the diversity that's on it. Only one person on this city council has went to the Walkers residence or picked up the phone for condolences. I just watched a video where Sheriff Wright lied through his teeth that he sent condolences, and he contacted the Walker family. I'm not going on hearsay. I meet with the Walkers a lot. I talk to them. I'm disappointed, and I'm upset that one individual, they went over there. I'm not going to isolate them, but they know who they are in the council, who reached out to that family, who was grieving for a child that was murdered by law enforcement. Secondary, I just added this to my PowerPoints. We keep coming back to the slave market. It's not the market house, the slave market. And I ask all my Caucasian citizens at this meeting, if you want us to turn the page that much, the next weekend, let's do a reenactment, and y'all be the slaves, and we buy and sell y'all. That's how passionate we feel about the slave market. That's what it is about. This issue is not going to go away. The individuals that run the law enforcement, whether it be the Sheriff Department or the Fayetteville Police Department, must be held accountable. So we asked the release of the firing, the racial component, so we can prove that the racial component, especially in the Sheriff Department, minorities are being let go at a three-to-one rate compared to our Caucasian citizens on law enforcement. We ask for an investigation of that. Please stop having these conversations concerning my culture and that slave market before this forum with outsiders who are not passionate about the issue, who just seek monetary value at that site. It's not a monetary values at that site. If you are of my skin pigmentation and you drive past that slave market and it doesn't bother you, then you are truly just a person of color. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. And I tell you, all our screens have gone black, so I don't know what's going on there. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our final speaker this evening is Mr. Tyrone Williams.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Are all the screens back up yet? Or are they still dead?
No, we don't have them.
No, none of the screens. Okay, great. My name is Tyrone Williams, 203 Wall Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28301. I'm running for city council District 2 also. I want to thank the mayor, the council all for having me today, and also the audiences being here. The issue today is I went out canvassing today, and the Dismal Charity Company was the top of the subject of the constituents I talked to today. So I had to sign up to talk on their behalf. The permit, they asked me the question, did we really want to stop the Dismal Charity Center? And I kind of had to sit there and think about it a little bit. Coming on behalf of the citizens of District 2, which is really close to right there, this Dismal, it kind of backs up right to it, I went to a district supreme and then to a higher court. Could we have settled it down at this level, at the city council level? Could we made a UDO code? Could we handle it there? Could we handle it with a different attorney that would have had more knowledgeable about the subject? One that was qualified to handle these matters. You know, 901 Kane Road, a private company comes in, District 2 problem, allowing for protection of a property value and the ability of neighboring land to develop the use or permitted in the zone district. That is the reason that we denied it, which wasn't a strong issue, they say. Why do we not use more of a safety, public safety issue as the issue of the problem? Why do we not allow the company to come in to buy the property, knowing that use was there and it wouldn't fit to our coding? Case being heard first time, second time, a court ticked a knock-out is what it was turned over on. Just because we didn't represent ourselves is what they say. Transparency, transparency, transparency is what they really want. Thank you. Tyrone Williams, City Council District 2.
All right.
We have no further speakers.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item 9.01, Empowering Community Safety Micro Grant Program. Mr. Colley, Chief, how are you?
All right. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Colley, Economic Community Development Director.
Chief Hawkins.
Yep. All right. So just a little bit of a reminder, we talked about this a few weeks ago, but in the fall of 2021, Chief Hawkins proposed a series of crime reduction strategies. Council appropriated $250,000 to fund the micro grant strategy. Over the winter, the police department, in partnership with the city manager's office and Economic Community Development, developed a process to give out micro grants to enhance community safety. At the April 11th workshop, we affirmed council's interest, and the micro grant application went live last week on May 2nd. We've got a couple of examples of potential projects here. We really wanted to, if council permit, take a minute for the chief and I to read some of these examples out, because I think it would be really beneficial to our listening audience to see some ideas that might be generated.
So, thank you, Director Colley. So basically, we all understand crime is a big problem. It deals with a lot of different issues. Some of these issues are the highlights. Conflict resolution and mediation is a large topic. Community prevention, I'm going to have the higher levels. Opportunities for youth, parents, and families, family stability, addressing upward mobility, implicit bias, and diversity. Those are the six major categories, but within those are subsections. And I'll give you an example, like for family stability. We understand that nutrition and food insecurities are issue as it develops for crime-related items. So if someone has an ID or a project or some type of program that they can address that is an idea. We go to community crime prevention. If there's opportunities for citizens returning from release, like re-entry, you have ID or program like that, that could be something regarding community crime prevention. Of course, opportunities for youth and parents and families. I've shared my story all the time. Had I not had a coach be able to pick me up and facilitate that as an individual child, who knows where I would be? So having opportunities if you have an idea, a program like that. Conflict resolution and mediation, those are major issues right now that we see in regards to people not being able to resolve a problem that they have a disagreement with. Whether someone has a program that talks about education and training of those issues and being able to look at big picture and talk about how do you de-escalate a situation within your program. Upward mobility, if you have an idea that can train or teach youth, young adults on a career training track, that's something, the idea you can bring. And implicit bias and diversity training, talking about strategies that can change behavior, exposed to differences of culture, differences of your own self, self-implicit biases. So we give these subcategories so people can have ideas and try to fit it in, but at the same time, we have training happening to be able, for the citizen to be able to ask questions and bring their idea and fill out a very simple application to put it on paper of how they think that their program can show results. But these are just examples of potential projects that are out there. We reminded, you don't have to be, you cannot first be an entity that makes more than $100,000 as a nonprofit. But you can, don't have to be a part of an organization. You can be an individual, or you can have some ideas. You can be two people and create it, but we're here to help. We partner with FTCC. Economic Development is already having, has had two trainings, and they've already recorded and have the rest of the training online. But these are just a few examples of what we know when we say, what is the root cause of crime? We all know it's not one thing. It starts from many things, from education, economics. There are a lot of things that impact crime and safety in our community, so.
Thank you, Chief. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the scoring criteria that will be used on the grants that are submitted. So scoring is a pretty time-intensive process. Based on the number of applications we get, that time will change, but we're kind of scoping in about three full workdays of reviewing applications and scoring them right now. And so that will be done by a cross-departmental group of city staff. We expect to have folks who are really engaged with, you know, the youth in our community, but also on the idea of putting metrics and deliverable results in it. Obviously, having public safety as a part of that group as well. So each applicant can earn a maximum of 100 points. Each proposal will get bonus points based on the ZIP code that is in. And so the police department has identified several priority ZIP codes, which are listed on the screen here. We also have scoring for each one of the categories that the chief just went over. Conflict resolution, mediation, community crime prevention, opportunities for youth, parents, and family, family stability, upward mobility, and implicit bias and diversity. There'll also be a bonus component to the scoring. And so the applications that have incorporated elements of inclusivity, collaboration, resourcefulness, and innovation will get those bonus points added as well. And so we look for a really successful application to be solidly in one of those six categories or more, and then to also have an inclusive approach that's collaborative, that's a new idea, that's innovative, and that shows that they're leveraging other resources and community input as well. So one of the reasons council asked us to come back tonight was to talk about the citizen review options that we have in front of us. So we did not want this to just be a staff-driven program, and council affirmed that at our last presentation. So submissions after they're scored by So submissions after they're scored by staff through that at least three-day process, they'll be presented to a citizen review panel. Will present projects with measurable outcomes and objectives. And so that means that if somebody submits something and we need to go back and ask clarifying questions to get a really good submission, that's what we're gonna do during that three-day period. The panel will review, challenge, and ultimately affirm or request changes to staff's recommendations. So a different way to say that is that they're gonna look over the list that council has scored, and they're gonna ask questions about why did this score this much, or why did that one only score this amount?
Counsel has scored or staff has scored?
I'm sorry, the staff has scored, yes, sir. Awards will be published on the micro grant website, which is live right now at FayettevilleNC.gov/microgrant. And outcomes will also be published to increase and ensure community accountability. So that means that an organization that gets money is gonna be listed on the website, how much money they got and what they hope to achieve, and then the end of the process is gonna say they successfully achieved this. So we have several options for makeup, and the chief and I discussed this earlier and actually want to kind of amend staff's recommendation a bit as well. We've looked at different citizen-appointed boards that council appoints citizens through the community to serve on certain boards and commissions. So we looked at the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, which is the citizen-appointed board for my department, Economic Community Development. We've also looked at the Citizens Police Advisory Board and the Human Relations Commission. Now, on top of that, staff would like to amend that to include representatives in the mental health sector and also representative from the school system. So based on council's direction and vote tonight, the chief and I will go back and determine who those representatives ought to be. And the grant program is underway right now. We've had our first week, we've got several applications in the system. We had 30 attendees for the first training session and 28 for the second one. We've got it out on social media, we've actually paid for a little bit of advertising to amplify that voice, and we've also sent it out to all of our nonprofit partners. We had a training with our public, our community.
Crime prevention specialist.
Crime prevention specialist, there we go, thank you, chief. We did that today to make sure that they can go out and spread the message to all those community watch groups in the community as well. We fully expect to see a grant application from every single community watch in our community. So with that.
All right, thank you so much. Let me see if I can get back to the screen. Councilors, we've heard the presentation, I know we've discussed this matter with, and I heard Mr. Colley had mentioned some of the things about the makeup of the citizen oversight or the board that actually votes on the projects or was the grant. So with that, I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Ingram in here.
Thank you. So I recognize that we are supposed to be talking about the oversight, but I did have a question about the potential of examples. I'm looking at gun intervention strategies, and that is, that's pretty much the leading cause of the death right here in the city, and we are finding them going into the hands of 21 years and below. And so my, I think my mind track is, could this also be used to facilitate maybe conversations with parents on or guardians on if I find a gun in my child's room, or if my child, you know, how do I handle that? Could that be something? And also, is there space to be able, I know we can't do, we had, I know Councilmember Kingston tried to bring up something about the gun buyback, but is there something that can be done to create that space for these weapons while we're talking about community safety to get off the streets at the same time as well?
So if someone comes under the category of community crime prevention, and you see the subcategory says gun intervention strategies, that would be something, if they create an idea or concept and lay it out in the plan, that will fall under that category.
Okay, so my second thing is, the title says community safety, and I'm looking at family stability, and I'm not saying I disagree, but if our main focus is safety, crime, and I do understand the need for access to affordable housing, we were having this conversation heavily, I think I just wanted to really focus on the crime. And, and I won't get into our work session from last week about affordable housing options, that's not there, but I'm really, I think I want to focus more on the crime and how to best equip the community to address that. I think some of these categories get a little far away from that, but I understand how they are connected at the same time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. Councilman here.
Thank you, mayor. Chief and Mr. Colley, will there be a timeframe to see if the concepts that are brought to us, or brought to you all, or brought to the, our partners that are gonna be helping with this? Would there be a timeframe to see if these concepts work? How is that gonna work?
Absolutely. That's part of the application process, and everything's gonna be different. You can imagine some timeframes take six months, some timeframes take two years, because to see results means you have to know the data that we provided, and then you have to see, a lot of times, you will be able to see, prevention is hard, like, deter and prevention is hard to measure because the incidents didn't happen. So it might take, so it might take some time, but this is a two-year, four process, four grant cycles, so it might take time, but it is gonna be up for the entity to say, how do they expect it to show results? And that's what's gonna be evaluated, so I can imagine absolutely things take time.
Yeah, and I know you're gonna bring it back to us, but just one little, small, short, one more question. Once it's brought back to us and we see if it can be implemented, whatever the timeframe that is, these concepts, they become part of FPD policy?
No, sir. These concepts, they in the community. This is a community initiative that they have the idea, they have the game plan, they have the program, and they grow this. So what should hopefully occur is either they come back for the next stage or next level of wanting more funding to do the next step of their program? And then eventually, because this is low level, it is also doing two folds, it's educating them about creating a grant, writing a grant, in order to possibly go to next level grant writing requesting. So it's almost building the capacity of the community to have ideas and bring ideas and grow ourselves within our community. How do we have programs or organizations or ideas that we work together and keep our community safe?
Well, thank you, thank you both, and I will say that my communities, community watch groups, they're very excited about it, so we'll be talking about it tomorrow night and the next couple of nights in meetings. Thank you, thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Kingston and then Wright.
Yes, thank you, mayor. One of the items after looking at this several times is human trafficking is not listed. Would that fall under the family stability even though it's not listed there?
I would say it could fall under family stability, remember, these are just examples, but I also would think of opportunities for youth, parents and families, leader training, any activity, let me see what else might be able to, so although, I'm trying to see what else, although these are just some examples, it's not limited to just these, because if you have a program that you want to address, I'll give it off the top of my head, dealing with young women who don't have resources or don't have care and need education on how to get out something, that's a program that can be taught and educated and supported that we know is done by the private sector and nonprofits all the time. We know that there are people out there working all the time to help those at-risk individuals who are human trafficking, so, who even traffic. So it's up for the ideas to come from the community to say, what is it that you need? These are just some, a few ideas, but it's not limited to this.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, that it's not just isolated to these here, that any other suggestion can be submitted for the Ryanco grant. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Davis and then Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, as I look at this presentation, I'm wondering, is there some type of format or example that you guys are gonna be putting out for community watch groups who may not have someone with a master's degree in city planning and management to apply for these grants? Because, and I'm not talking down, I'm just saying, there needs to be an example for someone to look at as to what a good presentation looks like, you know, a template, you know, for, you know, for example, a draft that someone can look at and say, when I submit, this is what, you know, one looks like.
I'm gonna give it to Director Colley, but a lot of effort and time went into that specific concern. Making it as simple as possible, it's 1,500, 2,500, 5,000. Not only just basic, it's the eight-page manual, it is keeping it as basic as possible, not on top of that, the training that comes with it, not on top of that, the resources that come with it. You can ask for help, and we're here to help guide and help you figure out how to submit the application. But go ahead, Director Colley.
So I think the chief hit the nail on the head, absolutely. That was first and foremost in trying to put this program together was to ask very simple questions. What are you trying to do? Describe your project in 400 words or less. How many people do you think you're gonna impact? What do you think the impact is gonna be? And are you working with kids? Are you working with those adults that are 18 to 24 that we know is a target demographic? Are you working with families? And so those are very simple questions that are out there, and I think that anybody who might feel a little nervous about applying for a grant can go onto the website, you can look through the manual, like the chief said, it's only eight pages long and explains a lot of it. But you can just log in and start creating an application, and then you can save it and go back to it. You can call our department at 433-1590 and we'll help you walk through it. And you can also just go to the website at FayettevilleNC.gov/microgrant, and it's got a lot of information to help people get through that application process as well.
So when would all school live? Like, when's the big kickoff party? Where's the big media flush? When's the Fayetteville Reserve gonna get it? It needs to be out there.
It has been, sir.
I think the city does a lot of stuff, we just don't publicize it well, so when is that gonna?
We did that, it has been out there, it has been in all those outlets, and we started live last May 2nd, and then we already have five or six applications in the hopper?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have, we've been pushing it out, all of us have been pushing it out, yep.
And on top of that, our corporate communications department has put a little bit of money behind doing targeted Facebook ads to amplify that message out. I know I got them.
Been on radio stations.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, chief, and by the Colley. We want to make a motion. Before I make my motion, I'd like to make a comment that this program is a new initiative, developing these programs, but what I really like about what you are initiating is that any citizen, they don't have to be college-educated like some says, but have a idea or a passion. And so that involves the whole community that wants to get involved, so I want to thank you for that, and it's still underway and it's still developing. We covered extensively in our six o'clock meeting, a lot of things, so we're gonna give you some time to do that. But I want to make a motion, because you have three, but this motion would be to add two more on the board, and also that you would bring back to us those two names and what those would bring to the table, what they would bring to the board, a list of their professional attributes that they could bring to the table, and I think that will give us the five that we're looking for, that we talked about earlier. Is that understood? Or you look like you have a question?
Yeah, because I want to make sure, I thought we were given, focusing on mental health as one entity, and then the school safety coordinator was our focus to tie in the five panel.
Okay, great, and that's what we discussed, and so that will be a part of the motion. So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion that they would bring back those five names of the board, of those board council members, that that's going to be a part of making decisions concerning this program.
So it's motion by Councilmember Wright to approve with modifications as described with the two additional members representing those two sectors, it was seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, and I just, I don't think it was made clear at what this item was gonna, I know you mentioned it earlier, but just for the listening audience, tonight, we are giving direction to not choose one entity to decide who will get the awards. We are compiling a community-based board or advisory committee to be able to decide who would get that, and because this conversation took place within the dinner meeting, there were some added things along with the presentation, such as mental health and going within the schools, so that just was not communicated clearly within the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, he stated.
Thought I made it very clear.
No.
You didn't understand.
All right, so we have motion on the floor, I had discussion on the motion of a second by Mayor Pro Tim, and council, look to you, to your iPads for your vote. All right, Madam Clerk, that vote is unanimous 10-0. Motion carries, so thank you, Mr. Colley, thank you, chief, realizing this, even though the city, you, me, the city council, maybe the face of crime in the city, there are a lot of partners that play a role in this process, from judicial, district attorney's office, also mental health in our schools, everybody is needed at the table in order to be successful, so we want to make sure listening audience understands that, but I think we off to a good start, so thank you. All right, item 9.02, Parks and Rec Project Report Card, Mr. Gibson is just getting to work.
Bring some good stuff too, sir.
How you doing, sir?
Doing fine, mayor, council. All right, let me see if I can find this. All righty.
I can't find it, man.
I got it, I got it.
I don't even call these bankers hours, I don't know what to do.
I'll tell you. All right, this is a report card for the bond. I think one of the things that's happened and from the city manager's office is that there'll be some other things that'll be included in here, just to make sure that we are meeting your interests and making sure that we roll out these projects that were done by the voters. So here you have on your screen, you have the agenda, the introduction, some of the bond projects, some of the park projects that we're doing, and oh, the Glenville Lake Trail is on there. I wonder how that happened?
It better be on there.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, sir.
You can see, thank you.
Thank you.
We believe that that makes sense, and we appreciate the community understanding that enjoying our waterways or something that we're working with PWC, hard to figure out how we make that happen and make it make sense, as well as protecting the water system that all of us drink and enjoy. So that's a process that'll continue to happen, and we're constantly having those conversations to make sure that we don't do anything that jeopardizes that. You can see some of the completed projects that we already have, as we go, the existing parkways, Seabrook Park, and when we did that playground unit over there, where, and some of these, the playground units that we're adding in, may not show up on here as quickly because we're moving so fast with getting them in. Robert can't write fast enough. So those are some of the pluses that'll happen in this process. The Bill Chris Center, I don't know if anybody's, if any of the council members have been driven by there yet to see what's going on over there. We have a tremendous contractor, and just walking inside the building, just driving by, it doesn't give you, it doesn't do it justice. I always tell the seniors when they give me a chance to talk to them, that that investment in senior recreation, this council has done probably some of the best work in the state as far as valuing their seniors and this. probably some of the best work in the state as far as valuing their seniors in this community. So I can't wait to see that thing open in a few, um, I ain't gonna jinx it, not gonna jinx it. But it's, uh, it's well underway and we think we'll be meeting that, that milestone that we wanna do to make sure we cut the ribbon on that one. It's going real well. Um, I, I go by it at least twice, uh, a week just to make sure that everybody shows up. Um, and you don't have to hunt anybody. They're there every day working. Um, and this is, uh, the, some pictures of it, um, and, and I'll just tell you, it, it just doesn't do it justice. Um, it's a tremendous recreational facility once it's done.
Yeah.
Um, the Senior Citizen East, um, that project is going out. I mean, the bid has come back. Um, from what I understand, um, it, it made it through the consent agenda, so that'll be getting, uh, done pretty soon.
Yes, sir.
It'll be another, um, building that adds tremendous value to seniors and from an inner city or, uh, or an urban environment. Um, that'll, um, just, uh, show seniors that, uh, we appreciate what they do in this community. And, um, and from a recreation standpoint, um, we appreciate it.
Wha- what's that location, sir?
Uh, it's on, it's at the corner of Murkison Road and Filter Plant Drive, bordering Washington.
Murkison Road Corridor.
Yes, sir.
Proceed, sir, proceed.
All right, uh, you can see the facility here, um, and, uh, it's, yeah, well, I'm, it's not gonna keep laboring it. But it's a tremendous asset that's gonna be done for the parks and recreation, um, and for our community to enjoy. Uh, the MacArthur Road Sports Complex, um, we're, we're moving that as fast as, uh, um, the federal government will allow. Um, but, uh, they're, they're just as energetic, uh, about doing it. One of the things that with, with such a large landmass, uh, making sure that everybody's comfortable with what that paperwork looks like and that, that, that perpetuity for, for about thirty years. But, uh, i- it's moving well. The design is going, um, good. I think we even incorporated out of the twelve fields to make that maximum distance so that, uh, there's some two-seventy-fives and maybe some three-hundred-foot fields out there. So we're constantly working on that design. Um, I think that'll be a, a, um, a process or, or another jewel that we'll have in this community. So when people come in, um, to this community, it'll, it'll be a valued, uh, recreational asset. Uh, and you can see how it looks here, um, a- and people are excited, so I, I'm gonna make sure I don't stay on these too long. Um, the tennis center, um, uh, we had it at my advisory board meeting the other day. Um, they had the, uh, pickleball crew come in, uh, citizens, and they had the tennis citizens come in. Um, and, and I think one of the things that happens when they come to those meetings, they, they think that they're, they're going to upset me because they're coming in to talk about things and our lack of. Uh, and, and it just reinforces the reason that we passed this bond referendum just to make sure that we, you know, we add the assets that people really want in this community. And it's a, it's, for me, it, uh, it just affirms what we need in this, in, in our recreational environment. So the tennis center is, is out, um, it's in a three-part series as far as how we plan to, to make this happen. Um, so that's moving well. Um, uh, looking for bids to come in in a couple of weeks. Um, and here's, here's what we have. And, and these pictures don't do this justice. Once we're finished, it gives you some idea what it's gonna look like. But, um, we'll, we'll, we'll be competing with some of the best facilities in the state. Uh, the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center, another one of our, um, uh, areas where we lack with special needs, um, e- environment for our citizens. One of the things that people, um, tend not to understand is that we, we manage all of special needs. Doesn't matter from one county, I mean, from county line to city line. Um, and adding this three thousand square feet to Dorothy Gilmore gives us some flexibility and gives us a little girth as we move forward with, uh, special needs. And, and you can see here's what that facility looks like and how we, uh, we're gonna add that value. Mabel C. Smith, um, I went by there today and, um, people were standing out there looking, wanting to know where the playground unit went. And, um, I just kept driving.
My God.
No, I, I told them, we're, they're, uh, they're excited. Um, all of the pieces are here for the splash pad. Uh, the building is going well as far as the design goes. The new playground unit will be matching up just as much as, uh, when the building gets in there. The splash pad and the playground unit might be a little bit ahead of, of schedule where the building may lag a little bit. Um, but, uh, they'll have some value, um, in that community as far as upgrading that, that, uh, that, uh, the park here pretty soon. So, um, and every time I turn to go in down there, the lady that sits up at the corner, she waves her finger at me.
And where is that located?
Exactly, we're being watched.
Is that located, Mr. Gibson? Where is that located?
Oh, that's in District Two and on Deep Creek Road.
Okay, yes, through the river, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and you can see where we're gonna do the upgrades here and add that value. Uh, Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, we had a, a real good conversation, um, with the, uh, director and the architect of, of, of that project that we're doing that, uh, they've, uh, combined, uh, uh, you know, up to about seven billion dollars to make sure that that project goes. Um, and that collaboration, um, with how we manage that project, um, from, from both sides of the ledger is going real well. Um, the, the senior management group and at the city manager's office is, uh, is, is making sure that that doesn't lag, that there is no, uh, interruption in providing that, that project. Um, so that, that's going well. Um, hopefully, you know, we, we do justice there just as well as we're doing the rest of the projects. Uh, and you can see how this looks in, um, from, from a Murkison Road corridor, this, this will add tremendous value. Uh, the Cape Fear River Park, um, the design is going. Um, we, we've taken the, uh, the, uh, concept that we had about ten years ago and we're refining that, uh, making it make sense. Um, having those conversations where, um, other, uh, best practices have been used in other, uh, communities throughout the state, um, throughout our region. And making sure that the product we bring back to council to approve, um, has some, uh, some value to enjoying our, our waterways for probably the first time that we've ever done anything, uh, in this community. So that, this is, this is going real good. Um, Rob Stone's, uh, group, um, Jason Miles and, and, and Joseph Staten. Um, and like I said, I'm not the easiest person to work with, uh, but they, they, they tend to understand, uh, from a recreational standpoint, what we need and what we're trying to achieve, um, and, and they do a wonderful job. Um, of saying, you know, stop, Michael, back up, Michael. Nobody's gonna get in trouble with you, Michael. So they're, they're, they're doing a wonderful job here. And this is challenging when you go down to our river, um, and the distance from where uh, ground level is down to water level and making that make sense. So we're, we're working on them real hard on, on getting that done. Uh, oh, there it is.
There it is.
The Glenville Lake Trail, um, what, one of the things that you'll see, um, at our next council meeting. Uh, council gave us an, a direction to go ahead and add this to the Center City Parks Trail Plan. Uh, had a conversation with the architect a couple of days ago. He'll be bringing that forward, so we'll have that for you to adopt. Um, once you adopt that, then we'll start to have those kinds of conversations, which brings this to fruition. Um, with our, uh, s- senior management group, uh, Rob Stone's group, um, and, and council to make sure that we are staying on track to make sure that this happens. Uh, and definitely with our partners with PWC to make sure that they're comfortable, um, that there won't be any interruption in water services or quality of water. Um, also wanted to mention, um, uh, the, uh, lake rim, uh, splash pad and playground unit that we're, uh, currently working on. That's going well. Um, there, we should be trying to finish that up in the next, uh, ten to fifteen days. Um, and we'll be, uh, planning a ribbon cutting on that, hopefully here, um, in the next ten to fifteen days. Any questions?
Uh, hold on one second, Mr. Gibson, let's see. All right. All right, um, Councilmember Ingram, Kinson. Here, Wright and Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A lot of questions.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gibson, for this report. So I, I have one que- I have two questions. But, uh, quickly, can you give an update on Walker Spivey?
Oh, yeah, uh, uh, and I apologize. We'll, we'll, we'll start to make sure we add that. Um, the, the lights are in. Um, that was part of the, uh, we put irrigation on the field. We've, uh, uh, did some fitting of some wooded areas out there. Uh, the splash pad revitalization, that's, that's here. We have those permits, the equipment is here. So that'll be going on simultaneously when we're doing, um, cuz the same contractor got both of the, uh, the, the bids. So that'll be going on, um, when we're doing Mabel C. Smith at the same time. So that, that project is going well.
Okay, thank you. And so, um, trying to get to it, for the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Park, I know that's been heavily discussed. You were saying that the pu- the, the positioning of it had shifted. Does that affect, um, resources, funding, uh, with the sh- with it being sh- the position shifting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then when will, and, and if it can come in these, in the Parks and Re- um, uh, report cards? Because the Murkison Road Corridor has a lot going on within it and, uh, we're also aggressively working on our trails for that specific area. I know once the tennis courts from Mazer- Street, Mazer Park, Glenville Lake. I know a lot of that will start to come through Filter Plant. Can we also get an added update for that trail when you bring this to us? Because these are three different projects, but they're all gonna be within the same area. And I just wanna make sure that it's all being communicated at one time.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I'm, I'm, I look at the list and as, um, I wanna acknowledge, majority of these projects are in District Two, which is, I, I like to say is the lay of the land. Um, when will we begin to discuss our Parks and Rec Master Plan? When it comes to doing more West Fayetteville? Um, because I look at Tennis, Tennis Center, you know, Tennis Center, West Fayetteville, you know, I look at those things and, um, we have it here, Center City, but how, how, when are we gonna discuss being able to start to push that out?
Need to be careful here.
And, and, and these.
And I say this as because, as we grow. Well, well, as we.
And council, excuse me, hold on, council. Councilmember Ingram has the floor, but I do wanna make sure that we, we keep this on the Parks and Rec Bond projects.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I recognize as we grow as a city, we grow out. And so I, I just, I'm just asking a question about when do you, do you think we can begin that?
Uh, w- w- once it's requested, we'll, we'll, we'll do as the manager's office say.
Wanted to know, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kinson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Gibson, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yes, ma'am.
But when you, um, originally presented this, I told you I saw a vision of a wedding out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so not, not to put you on the spot, but I do see August of, um, looks like twenty-three. Um, is that still a possibility once the Tennis Center is done, that it could also be used as a, uh?
I, I think, I think one of the things that we're, that we're definitely gonna do is once we get the, uh, be- because we haven't accentuated the, the Tennis Center, we're, we're always talking about the, the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. The, the, the sixty-five hundred square foot building that will support that will, will definitely be able to have one of that element in it. So I, yes, ma'am, that, that'll happen.
Well, I do like the fact that it's multipurpose.
Exactly.
So thank you very much for, um, putting that out there. So for, uh, any, uh, brides that are looking at a new facility, there you go. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I thought you had an announcement of it. Councilmember here.
Congratulations. Um, I don't know if this is something that you can answer, if this is the appropriate time, maybe the Assistant City Manager. But has the, and I can back up if I'm out of order and I can send.
If it's pertaining to Parks and Rec Bond.
It's, it's, yes. Uh, just wanted to ask if, if the ML, MLK Committee, have they received all of their funding?
Councilmember, yes, yes, they have received their funding from the state.
Okay.
That they have their money in their bank account, yes.
From the state. Now, what about what came from city council?
That, that, that money, we, that money as well as the county funding, we are actually holding now, we're working on an MOA to deal with the infusion of those two, um, portions of the funding for that program.
Yeah, cuz I, I continue to get calls about that and I wish, I mean, I understand, we, I don't understand what form of the, okay. I, I know we're doing a memorandum, but I, we, we need to discuss that a little further because they need their money.
We'll be more than happy to. So we, and, and I think, uh, Director Gibson just mentioned that we've had very, uh, productive conversations with the MLK Committee as well as the architect about the process moving forward. We just wanna make sure that everyone understands roles and responsibilities for that funding.
We'll, we'll sidebar. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Great discussion. Um, I want to ask a question about the Bill Chris Senior Center, uh, out west. And so the, you have a deadline, July twenty-two, I see, of completion. But, and, and everything is going well. I visit it all the time out there. I'm very excited and talk to the people out there, the senior citizens. And everybody is just jacked. But another element to that, I think we were talking about the lake itself, uh, the walkways around the lake, uh, amenities where seniors can go sit. Tell us a little bit about that and the partnership that I think we have with the state. And those monies, are they, are they there or how are we looking at that?
Well, a- and, and I think what, what you're asking is, um, once the building is finished, will we give them access to go down on our side of the lake? That's one of the things that, um, we're waiting to see where the money falls out, is if there's any left after that. If, I don't know, and you've been out there, we, we're doing a lot of land clearing to make sure that it's visible. Um, as soon as we're finished and we can see some clarity as far as closing that out and getting the COA to go in the building. The, the trail system is planned.
Right.
It's not fully funded yet. Um, the dock system that we talked about about five years ago with the North Carolina Wildlife, that's definitely a possibility because their main interest is to keep us on our side of the lake. Because on their side of the lake, it's for fishing.
Right.
For boating, uh, for people to have access. So they're very interested in making sure that we're successful on the other side of the lake. So we'll make sure that, uh, we incorporate all that we have in the master plan out there.
So, so just so, so the citizens could hear, you know, a little bit about what those amenities will look like?
Well, it, it, it'll, when, and, uh, when you're in the back of the building, there's gonna be a two thousand, uh, square foot patio in the back. Off of that patio system, there'll be a way for you to traverse down the embankment to get down to the lake. Once you're down on that ground floor, you'll be able to walk on that, that lake, uh, front from one end of, of the, uh, area back to the other, um, and then go back out on the old Rayford Road, uh, road bed.
That's gonna be great for senior citizens. Um, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, very quick, in regards to the Glenville Lake Trail, I know you know where I'm going with this.
Yes, sir, I do.
Part of that plan will include going back towards north northwest Fayetteville, near the Roses Lake area at some point in time. Is that part of the system?
Not, not this one.
Not this.
What you're, what you're referring to is the Big Cross Creek Trail.
Big Cross Creek.
That'll, that'll traverse from the, from behind Fayetteville State.
Yes.
Go all the way up through Broadell, come through North Hills, go across and go up to Smith Lake.
Absolutely.
Um, we're, we're having, we're, th- those plans are being developed now.
Okay.
Um, so once they're done, then we'll go back to FAMPO to get that funded through the state. One of the things that we're, we're having conversation with is trying to see, because the state and, which is, you know, DOT has such an infusion of cash now, we're trying to see how fast we can get that moved up. Um, on the scale to go ahead and get it finished and then get that funded. But you're talking about the Big Cross Creek Trail. So, yeah, that, that is definitely, but it's not part of
Right.
this one. It's part of the one that we've been working on for about four or five years.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So that, that is definitely in there.
Thank you. You a- answered a lot of questions for me.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I wanna say, um, Michael, we've come a long way since two thousand and fifteen. And I think that, um, you know, just for the public out there to know that not one project has been easy and that it has taken a lot of time, a lot of collaboration. And I a lot of time, a lot of collaboration, and I can say so far, every, um, project that we have brought out on this bond has been basically a home run.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can go back to the Skateboard Park, the Splash Pads, um, we started out this bond and there was one splash pad in the whole city of Fayetteville, now I think there's eleven in our county, um.
Well, now that there's, uh, the, if you count the whole county, once we open up, uh, um, Lake Rim, it'll, it'll be right, right at fourteen.
Okay, I like that even better. So we went from one splash pad in our county to fourteen, that is amazing, and that is great work, um, I know that there's a lot of people up here on the diocese that are asking a lot of questions, but I just want, um, the residents to know, when this bond was passed, and I think there was three of us on the council, working very hard to, took the leadership to say, you know, let's try to make this happen, that we are making a better Fayetteville, and we do want to make sure that all our residents have a place in Fayetteville, but the coolest thing about this is that the county and the other small new municipalities around us are saying, we want it too, so it, it's been a win-win with all the collaboration, and I want to thank you for all the work that you and your staff have put in because we've had six years of meetings, well, really five years of meetings that we needed to figure it out, and I wanted to, um, recognize Councilmember Wright that was with this committee from the beginning. So again, I just wanted to say thank you, and we are gonna keep pushing and making sure we do these projects on time and on budget, so thank you very much, and we're not finished yet.
No, we're not. All right, good job, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the Parks and Rec Project Report Card.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, any discussion, uh, just briefly, okay, any discussion on a motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, let's go to the iPads. All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimously, ten oh, uh, good job, Mr. Gibson, just want to say, this has seemed like a long road, but, uh, eleven, twelve splash pads, um, several projects, as you've heard tonight, um, in years of, of hard work, uh, our community is definitely in a better, better position, so thank you. Uh, council, as we look to the administrative report, uh, the Small Business Local, uh, Small Local Business Enterprise Program Update, the SLBE Program, which is Local Minority Participation, um, asks that you would consider moving that to a work session, uh, before adjournment. Could we get a motion for this? Okay, I'm sorry, you can't, can't see who hits the buttons if you got, uh, uh, operation open, so, all right, all right, so motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember here, uh, discussion on the motion to move this table, let's bring it to work session for further discussion, all right, all those in favor, let's vote via iPad? Oh, all right, there we go, all right. Wait, no, someone? All right, those in favor, show of hands? All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, uh, those voted, vote, uh, motion to adjourn, council? All right, y'all have a good evening.